Out with the date. Ah, there he goes. Now we have the recording. I'd like to call together the meeting of March twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, Councilmember Allison, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Holt's clock. Mayor Pro Tem Vina.
Here.
Councilmember Cavallari. Councilmember Steckler.
Here.
Councilmember Allison.
Here.
Councilmember Duque.
Here.
And Councilmember Paddock.
Present.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Holt's call had a last minute emergency and Councilmember Cavallari also had something come up. So um, at the last minute, if I could have a motion to excuse both of them, please.
Motion to excuse.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. Um, next up, I need um, someone to call to amend the agenda to remove item eight C. This evening on the Ask Me MOUs, the reason is staff and Ask Me are still working on that. It's not complete. So if I could um entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Of motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Item eight C has been removed from the agenda for this week. With that, we will move on to public comments. Anyone have? Oh, I see Barb raising her hand. Uh, I will start with Barb.
Barb Piddle, fourteen oh one, one hundred forty-fourth place Southeast Mill Creek. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. At the city chat about two weeks ago, it was nice to see so many people at the MCCA meeting room. The people were very engaged and knowledgeable about the current issues with legislature and housing. Thanks to Councilmember Duque and Councilmember Paddock, Nick Lewis and Hillary from the MCCA, they were able to help the city mayor and deputy city mayor with answering questions the participants had. The questions were intelligent, very appropriate, and very legitimate, addressing timely concerns they had. It was one of the best city chats I've attended. Thank you to all who participated and helped. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Does any, would anyone else like to um? Okay, um, Will's blank. Sorry, something came up in front of Will, so I needed to make sure that he was on there. Anyone in the audience, but anyone in the audience like to speak? Okay. Thank you. There'll be another chance for um comments at the end of the meeting. So moving on tonight, we will start with new business. Um, and we will start with legislative update is first on the agenda. Um, myself, um, Councilmember Allison and Duque and um City Manager, um, Martin Yamamoto. First off, I want to give everyone a couple of updates on where we are with some things we're doing with housing. So um, to be honest, House Bill eleven ten is a little confusing. And we're not the only ones confused. So we have been doing some work, um, moving back and forth. Um, it seems that um PSRC, we've been talking with PSRC and AWC, both of them have had also, PSRC at first was having our interpretation that it would not apply to us. AWC was having an interpretation it does apply to us. So um, really with this one, we are still working on this and trying to suss out, if you will, the implications that it will have on the city, and it sounds like a lot of people are confused, not just us. So we are working on that. And I can't remember, I think it was last week, we told you that we had sent, we had put forth a letter um regarding House Bill one 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 zero. Um, also though, moving, as things are moving so quickly, I just want to let everybody know, all the council members should have received um the letter that we sent out um for testimony regarding Senate Bill five four six six. Um, that bill is requiring density um within three quarters of a mile of um high capacity transit. So we are talking with AWC. And we did submit a letter that should have went out to all of you um last minute. Um, but we found out we acted, so it went out to all of you. And really, one of the things we're struggling with here is that they're treating everyone the same. So what we're trying to work on with AWC and to push back on is this idea that our city should be treated the same as all other high-capacity transit communities because the density that is, that you would have right next to a light rail is not the same as density that you would have next to a bus station. So we are working with pushing on that, and we did send forward a letter for testimony. And we do have some work ongoing with AWC as well. Um, and also I had a discussion with one of the council members from Linwood today, and we are going to work on getting together a group from Linwood and Mill Creek and possibly Moca TO two to to try to lobby our legislators regarding um these two bills as well. Um, finally, before I see if anyone else says an update, just want to let everybody know that um our ask that we had for um for funding have been approved in the House budget. They still need to go through the Senate, but through the Senate budget, so they'll move over to Senate. But as of this moment, they are proceeding with no issues is what I hear. So um, it's not final until it gets through, but right now there are no, we are unaware of any concerns. So hopefully those will pass. Um, and then um, Councilmember Allison, have you had any updates?
Yes, um, well, not, not really any update. Nothing has moved since the last time I gave a report. But um Senate Bill five three five two, which is the vehicle pursuit um modification um is still, it still needs House Committee action. And Senate Bill five five three six, which would reinstate um a drug possession law at the state level is also in need of House Committee action. Um, and that's all I have to report on. Thank you.
Councilmember Duque.
So I don't have a report, but I just wanted to um uh would, would very much like those letters that we've um submitted that we've put out there to also be on our website, if they're not already, the ones that we've submitted to um legislative for transparency purposes, whether it's on the homepage or we have the other news and it's just a statement from the city council, what that looks like. But I think it's really important that we are, we are being proactive. We are working with staff. Our staff is doing a fantastic job on being on top of these things, and we need to highlight that. Whether or not someone looks at it online, it's the um making sure that we are visible with these actions um that we may not have been as visible with in the past.
Perfect. Thank you. And um City Manager, do you have any updates on things that we did not address?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Yes, just one. Uh, there's one that was, I don't know if it was assigned to a committee member. It's fifty forty-two, the one that's authorizing impact fee revenue, the transportation revenue to be used for bicycle and pedestrian facilities. That uh bill is actually still moving forward uh with majority support. Uh, recently on March twenty first uh through executive session in the House Committee. Um, and still moving forward. So that's just my report. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. All right, um, Steve, I have any questions or Councilmember Paddock?
One, uh, two questions. One, on uh HP eleven ten, have we had clarification on whether or not that doesn't, does or does not apply to HOAs? Retroactively, excuse me, uh HOAs that are in effect today.
Um.
It will not.
Well, I know what, okay, I know what I was gonna say.
If you have an HOA in place now, their restrictions would trump what is being done in the legislature, although you can, yes, that might be subject to legal challenge over the years. I think that's part of the concern. But if you talk to, so the HOA presidents and office staff, they seem to feel like they are in a pretty good place and AWC can burn. That's true.
Okay, thank you. And then second, would you mind reminding us or someone what the funding requests were that are still moving through?
Could you um give us those amounts, Councilperson Manager?
Uh, just over a million. Um, the fund, the DRCC site planning, which um is this, the next phase after the initial phase with PDA and Associates. And the second project is just over five hundred thousand, which uh is for our DZCHVAC, um, and working on that system.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
See, all right.
Yes. Yes, sir. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, Councilperson Recylo, did you have questions? Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, um, next up, we will move on to eight B. Um, interlocal agreement resolutions with Washington School Information Processing Cooperative and Puget Sound Educational Service District. Ermina, Director of Finance, is gonna lead us.
Sorry. Thank you. Should I, should I, okay. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, staff, um, the audience in council chambers, as well as those joining us virtually. Um, tonight, I am back seeking authorization to execute two intergovernmental cooperative um purchasing agreements with Washington. Washington School Information Processing Cooperative and the Puget Sound Educational um Service District, which oversees the Washington Learning Source. So in the next few years, we are also anticipating purchases of technology for goods and services to replace our aging capital assets and also to support the implementation of certain um council-approved ARPA funded projects per ordinance twenty twenty-three eight ninety. And we anticipate that certain um of this uh purchases, the cost and the funding source will um trigger strict and extensive procurement procedures that would require um expertise, time and resources. Um, and these are governed by the procurement standards that are um as follows. So the RCW thirty-nine point twenty-six procurement of goods and services are Mill Creek Municipal Code Chapter three hundred, three hundred dash zero two uh supplemented by the procurement procedures manual, as well as sections two hundred dot three seventeen to two hundred dot three twenty-seven of the Code of Federal Regulations, um, Part two hundred, subpart B. Um, so these standards would ensure that we will have consistent, fair and open competitive um processes are observed while obtaining the best quality and value for the agency. Now, joint or cooperative action such as the cooperative purchasing agreement arrangement is allowed under RCW thirty-nine dot thirty-four dot zero three zero. Um, which is um uh uh allowed by appropriate action by the governing um body via ordinance or resolution. And this is also encouraged by the CFR Code, um, Section two hundred dot three eighteen E. The joint cooperative um have several benefits for us. It would increase our economy and efficiency because uh we will have access to the contract based on negotiated prices and best value obtained through expert and streamlined um competitive processes that either meet or exceed our purchasing requirements. It also is a strategic way of sourcing of shared requisites and services so that we can facilitate internal processes and staff can focus more on implementation and completion of the project. So in this regard, um, we are recommending the execution of a cooperative purchasing agreement with Washington School Information Processing Cooperative. Um, and as well as the Puget Sound Educational Service District, which operates the Washington Learning Source. Um, just as the background, the W, the WISPIC is a nonprofit public agency created in nineteen sixty-seven by ten school districts. Today, there are three hundred thirty-four members utilizing the cooperative's quality software, hardware and centralized technology support contracts at negotiated prices. Um, and in, and the other one, which is the PSESD, was um established in two thousand and six, excuse me. PSED established the Washington Learning Source in two thousand and six, which is a competitive purchasing program developed by the state's nine regional educational service districts to serve as a single source to access variety of resources to enhance the education and teaching in the state. And today, WLS has three hundred seventeen members with access to competitive bids for technology, software, equipment and services. Our recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute both um interlocal cooperative purchasing agreements with WISPIC and PSEDSD. Excuse me, PSEDSD. Um, council will have two actions. Um, one is to adopt a resolution approving an interlocal cooperative purchasing agreement with Washington School Information Processing Cooperative. And the second action is to adopt a resolution approving an interlocal cooperative purchasing agreement with Puget Sound Educational, Educational Service District. That ends my report, and I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions? Councilperson Recylo.
So I apologize, I'm, just to make sure I'm clear on on what we're agreeing to here. It, it sounds like what we're approving is just the ability to work in conjunction with this cooperative for the purchasing of of IT services, so, software services, all kinds of different things. Um, this does not uh keep us from looking at outside sources if we can't find what we need through the, the cooperative. Is that correct?
Yes, that's a, that's correct. So this, the ILAs just gives us the opportunity um to tap into their resources right now, which means that if we find vendors there, we can directly sole source because they've already gone through the bid process. Alternatively, if we, it's still our prerogative as a city to do our own bid process. This does not hold us from um procure, preclude us from doing our own purchasing.
Sounds wonderful. I'm just, uh, I just want to make sure I clearly understood it.
Thank you for the question.
Any other questions? All right, can I entertain a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving an interlocal cooperative purchasing agreement with Washington School Information Processing Cooperative. I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second? Any discussion? I remembered. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Um, any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes. And do I have a, a second motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the interlocal cooperative purchasing agreement with Puget Sound Educational Service District.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, we will move on down to number ten, study session on an ordinance of any Mill Creek Municipal Code forty dot thirty dot zero four zero related to the arts and beautification, regular start date and discussion on updating code provisions. City Manager and um City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So this, uh, I want to thank first, not only our City Attorney, but also our Deputy City Clerk for providing the planning and preparation on this. Adrian contributed quite a bit to filling in and then applying his best practices from the City of Kirkland. Um, this all started with a request by the MB Board to change their uh day of the month. Uh, the week of the month, actually, and uh that they're actually meeting, so to accommodate schedules. Um, while um looking at that change, we also continue to look at some of the code provisions across all the boards. Uh, we know some uh material difference, differences um across the organization and the operation of the commission. So um we're going to bring forward a number of provisions. Uh, and at the end, you'll have about five questions. Uh, policy questions that we will ask you to address um uh as you consider some changes that might increase, that we believe might increase efficiencies uh across not only uh council, but also uh city operations as well. So with that, I'll hand it over to our uh City Attorney to present. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Good. Um, so Adrian, do I have, am I, am I driving this or are you?
Um, that's a Joe question. Joe, is he able to?
No, yeah.
Yeah, no, um, do you want, I, I am, the, I was not planning on running slide. No one.
Okay.
Um, if you have a slide, you can present, but I will rant.
I could drive. I got it. Just tell me when.
Okay, cuz I, yeah, the only reason I, I don't, I don't see a share screen. It's not letting me do it, so. Um, we'll go from there. So um, so tonight, um, why don't we move to the um what we want to do tonight, uh, slide number two. Uh, we'd like to talk about, you know, the process that we, we, we've gone through is uh, as the city manager mentioned. Uh, in discussing, um, yeah, taking a look at our commissions, we have, we have seven commissions total of obviously, the Civil Service Commission has a, a separate uh ordinance and is governed um in a, in a different way with a state law overlay, as is the left one disability board. Um, then our independent salary commission that was adopted by the council last year uh meets very infrequently because it, once it submits its report, it's, its work is completed and you would have to reauthorize it to, to continue. So our, our focus tonight is going to be on, um, if we can go to uh, the agenda, uh, really talking about four of the commissions, in particular, the planning commission, the design review board, uh, the parks and recreation board and the art and beautification board. So if we could get down to uh to uh slide number four, that's what we're going to spend our time talking today because these commissions are uh, are the focus of what we want to uh talk about from a, the perspective of its rules and its operations and governing procedures. Um, go to slide five. Um, our boards and commissions are governed, these four in particular are governed by two uh several different provisions in our code. Uh, code, uh, chapter four point oh two contains general provisions that apply to all of the boards and commissions. Uh, they focus on identifying what the role of the boards and commissions are, which of course is to provide an advisory role to you as a council. Um, there are procedures under four point oh two for the appointment of a, a board and commission members. How it go, how we go about doing it, providing uh notice in the newspaper and through our website. We have procedures for removal of um of boards and commission members. The council retains the right to remove any member at any time for any reason. Uh, we have attendance requirements very similar to what the city council has, which is if there are three or more unexcused absences by a council member or by a commissioner or a board member, that can result in a vacancy. There are provisions for excused absences, and they're the normal and expected ones, and a work conflict, uh, an illness or a, a death in a family of a family member are specifically identified in the, in the code. Uh, we also have a requirement for a quorum to do business and decisions uh have to be by a majority of the order commission. We also have a required, requirements that uh the boards and commissions all have obligations to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act. The meetings are recorded, minutes are taken. Um, and we also require an annual election of a chair, vice chair and a secretary for each commission. That's kind of an interesting provision because I believe there are chairs and vice chairs. I'm not sure if all the boards and commissions elect a secretary as well. We can talk about whether that is a, a, an item that perhaps whose time has come to change as well. All of the boards and commissions, all four of them that we're talking about tonight, um, have three-year terms set forth in four point oh two. Good move for the next slide. Uh. The the code also contains a, a chapter for each of the boards and commissions, planning commission, design review, parking, uh, parking wreck and the art and beautification boards. In these provisions for each one of the commissions and boards lists what, what the number of members are, the date and time for the regular meetings. That's one of the things that we're going to ask you to change for the art and beautification board tonight. Uh, and the date when each of the uh members' terms ends. If we can go to the next slide. There are two subjects, though, um, that neither the general provisions or the specific provisions governing the four boards and commissions don't address. And that is whether members of the boards and commissions are eligible for reappointment when their terms are over. And also whether there are term limits. So those, that is a consideration we're going to ask you to give some thought to tonight and provide some direction for. Uh, if we go to the next slide. Um, we also wanted to point out that there are, uh, there are differences um in, in how the uh boards and commissions operate and wanted them to just share them with you and and make sure you're, you're comfortable with them or if perhaps some changes do. We have two commissions that have seven members, and that's the planning commission and the parking wreck uh board. There are two commissions, there are two boards that have five members. That's the design review board and the art and beautification board. Um, then we have differing times of the year when the various boards and commission member terms expire. For example, parks and rec and um art and beautification members' terms expire on October thirty-first. Happy Halloween. Um, the planning commission terms expire on April thirtieth, and the design review commission terms expire on um August thirty-first. So it's sort of a, the, the calendar uh is replete with different dates, and the question is, is that administratively the best way to operate? We'll talk about that a little further in a minute. Also, uh, obviously residency is a requirement for all these commission with one exception, the design review board members have a, a requirement to, to be design professional, some sort of design professional qualification. And they are not required to be residents of this, of the city of Mill Creek. Um. Go to the next slide. Oh, what it, what this slide does is simply illustrates in a chart form what I just described. The uh, uh, it also includes the meeting dates and times for the, for the boards and commissions. Um, and, and just shows you kind of in a graphic form. One other thing that, that I wanted to point out with is are there boards and commissions that have to have their rules of operation approved by the city council? There is one that does, and that's the design review board. So another question that we're going to bring to you is whether there are operating rules for each board and commission and whether they should be reviewed and approved by the city council. Okay, let's move to the next question. That kind of gets to the, the, the point that the city manager brought up, which is as, as we did this review of the boards and commissions, we, we identified some policy questions that we would like you to weigh in on tonight. Um, the first is, should members be eligible for reappointment? And if, if, if that's the case, should we codify that in the general provision so it's clear that that is an opportunity? Uh, should there be term limits for boards and commission members? In other words, uh, should there, should a commissioner be able to be reappointed once, but but that would be uh a limit of uh two terms or six years of service? Um. Should there be a uniform number of members of each board and commission? As I said, we have two with seven and two with five. Um, and then should there also be a uniform date when the terms for boards and commissioners expire? Then finally, should, should each board and commission have its rules uh of operations reviewed and approved by the council? One thing that uh as we, as we looked into this further, not all of the boards and commissions have currently adopted rules of operations. Typically, these are bylaws that would say that they, you know, how they go about voting for their chair and chair-elect, uh, that they would operate under Roberts Rules of Order, things of that kind. And um, to our surprise, some of the, some of the boards and commissions don't have that they would operate under Roberts Rules of Order, things of that kind. And, um, to our surprise, some of the, some of the boards and commissions don't have those at this time. Um, if we go to the next slide. Wanted to look at, you know, sort of the pros and cons of some of these decisions. Obviously, if we're talking about the ability to be reappointed and have term limits, uh, what are the choices here? Clearly, if you don't allow reappointment, you expand participation, but on the other hand, what you lose is the acquired expertise that that a board member or a commission member might have after having served a full term and becoming, uh, conversant with the subject matter of the commission's jurisdiction and the issues that they're dealing with. So that's something to be weighed. These are the pros and cons to be weighed there. Obviously, uh, in terms of the question about how large the commission should be, whether it should be seven or five members. Uh, one advantage is again, participation, if you have a larger board or commission, you might avoid, uh, quorum issues if you have commissioner, commissioners or board members that, that, uh, might have to be absent at times. But also if, if you have consistency and efficiency of, you know, if it's, if it's not broke, don't fix it. Um, you know, if it's working well with a five-member board, that might be just fine. Uh, also the, the question about uniform termination dates, uh, one, one of the opportunities that there might be is if there was only one or two dates in the year where there's termination of boards and commissions that might allow for a more uniform and, uh, ex, uh, efficient manner of, uh, soliciting, um, candidates in the community who want, who might want to serve and, and put their name in the hopper uh, for consideration for a border commission. So there, there might be some advantage of, uh, of having a more uniform structure there. Um, and then also the, the last consideration about the procedures. Clearly, uh, there's a requirement now that the design review board have rules of operation and they'd be reviewed and approved by the city council. I'm not aware that that has been followed, um, and we haven't found any in doing some research about whether or not that has been the case in the past. Um, good one to the next slide. Having given some consideration, uh, of these issues, talking with the city ma, in the city manager, uh, and also with the clerk's office that do, does a lot of work with, um, managing the timing of meetings, uh, and the recruitment process, uh, obviously that you all are involved in as well. Uh, s- some recommendations that, that have come to, uh, from the staff, uh, to you are to codify, uh, the reappointment opportunity process, codify that there would be a term limit of two terms on each commission. Currently maintain the size of the each board and commission because there hasn't been a, a, a verified problem with the current operations and sizes of the various commissions. But there's a recommendation to have a uniform date when, uh, terms end, which would be May thirty first. It's the middle, middle of the year. It might be an appropriate time then to have solicit, made the solicitations for new members ahead of that May thirty first date. So new terms would begin on June one. And then finally, we do recommend making sure that each board and commission has a set of rules and operating procedures and that they're run by the council for, uh, your eyes and for your approval. Uh, then finally, um, as the city manager mentioned, there's been a request to change the date. Um, that the, uh, the date of the month that the art and beautification board meets, uh, there's a, a post ordinance contained in the packet. And this would be the appropriate motion, uh, if the council's inclined to, uh, to move that forward. With that, um, we'll take any questions. And we can maybe turn the screen off too.
Thank you. I'm sure we have lots of questions and you've put out a lot of, um, questions for us to consider. Actually, okay, I was gonna say, can we go back to those questions that you want us to?
Sure, it's, it's slide ten.
Yep, we found it. So thank you. So, um, I will start with council member Duque.
I'm sorry, we're having trouble hearing.
Hello? She tried to silence me. I'd like that to be on the record, everyone. She, no, thank you, man, for time. Um, yes, so, uh, I had a question first and it was about the, and I don't know how, uh, if I just, how I'm missing it. When you say eligibility for reappointment be codified, um, you mean that it's automatic that they can be, um, appointed? Again, I don't know if I understand that phrase.
No, no, it would be eligibility. In other words, right now, the code is silent on whether you could reappoint a current member of a border commission to another term. So what we would do is we would add in section in chapter four O two, point O two, a provision that would say that a member is appointed and they could be subject to a reappointment by the council. Doesn't mean you have to do it. It means that you are, they are eligible for it so that the code sets forth that opportunity.
Fantastic. Thank you for that clarification. So going down the list as you, um, as, as you had mentioned, so, um, my, this is just based off of my experience. I think absolutely, um, uh, can, we should make sure that it's in there that they can apply for reappointment. Um, I, uh, I love the, um, I'm just gonna skip down to, should there be a uniform term expiration date? I think that makes absolute sense when it comes to our publicity, our publications for all of them. And then there's a little bit of all of us working towards, um, this is when you can get involved with the, with the, um, with the city because then you're making it very clear. As a reminder, people do drop out throughout the year, so there will still be opportunities for those one-offs and, um, then they'll have to finish someone's terms. So based off of that, um, I'm actually not necessarily for term limits for board and commission members. I have a feeling I have a, have a whole different approach when it comes to, um, elected officials, but, um, for these volunteer ones, I, I think that there is something about having people who are on the board and commissions who've been there for some time. Um, as long as, I, I'm always hopeful that when we interview or more meeting with people, we're thinking about what, um, what are new voices that we can bring and, and that kind of aspect. So I wouldn't be for term limits. Um, I do think for size of boards and commissions, I think it should be all seven. Um, I know that for parks and rec, and I believe for planning commission, the ones that are at seven, get very heavily contest, contested for, um, applications and maybe the other ones who are five or not. So there could be something to that. But I like the transparency that it's seven across. It's also really helpful because there are times in our lives where not everyone can make it. And so making it when there is seven and you kind of know there's alternates, um, is helpful. So I would be recommending that. And then of course, um, the review and approve each board commission operating rules. That makes absolute sense. And I want to thank everyone involved in reviewing this and working towards it. I have, um, just two other things I wanted to flag. Um, as we're working on this process and thinking about what our role is with these, um, uh, commissions, I, I just want us to make sure that we're thinking through that. But when it comes time for the interview and application process, I think there's, um, an opportunity to update those applications. Right now, they're very generic, um, just a, just an overall volunteer one. And I'd like there to be some that are more, um, specific for the boards and the commission. So that's something that we could, should be thinking about and maybe that has to do with the rules and operation, um, and, and making sure that that language is there. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, nobody's lit up yet. So I have opinions. So I'm gonna talk real quick before, um, and now everybody like hits their button. So I, I just wanna, I wanna weigh in real quick on something, um, because it's something as soon as this was, um, brought up to me, um, that I have a concern about. I agree with council member Duque that it does seem to make sense that we would have a uniform expiration term because we can, we can promote. My concern was that we have a hard time getting in the interviews for one board, um, before a meeting with the way we're doing it right now. And so I was struggling in my imagination to see how we were going to do all of them at the same time. Um, and that was, um, that was my concern if they were all the same date. Um, and that's just where, um, my head was, but I, um, I'll keep my other opinions to myself till after everybody else's has spoken. But I did wanna bring that up, so. Um, yeah, just wait, like, you're right. Um, I'm not sure which order everybody put their mics up though. So I'm gonna start with, um, okay, council member Allison.
So, um, I, I agreed with everything that council member Duque, um, mentioned, but I also have a reservation about all of those expiring on the same date. I, exactly as, council member Vignal said, we have a really hard time getting one of those, um, expiring boards filled in time with the interview process. So, um, maybe we could divide them between two months that are close together or, you know, that might make it more reasonable. Um, we could open it up and advertise it all at the same time, but not seat everyone on the same date. Um, I, I do appreciate that consistency. Um, and, uh, yeah, I guess I, I agree with everything else that was said. I just wanted to mention those two things.
Thank you.
Okay, um, council member Paddock.
I guess, um, you, the last couple of folks that spoke is hitting on one of my concerns, which is if we don't have, if we have term limits, does it, does it compound the problem about us not having enough volunteers for the slots? That seems to be one of our challenges. It's just not having enough people that are interested in participating. I'd kind of like to see us turn away a few more before we decide to have term limits.
I, 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 I agree. Council member Steckler and then, um, city manager.
Well, first of all, thank you for bringing this to a study session. I, I, I like this whole procedure of the issue, the, the questions that are being asked, the opinion of, uh, our staff, and now the opportunity for council at this point, not to make any quick, any decisions, but just to provide their opinion as well. I think this process is wonderful. So I, I, I'll go through these as well. The, the, the term limits one, I definitely understand the, it's, it's an easier process to replace all these positions at one time from an efficiency standpoint. But we do have a real problem getting a candidate pool. We, we, we suffer from that. Uh, and if we have five people, many times they're looking at one opportunity, just, uh, uh, parks and rec or just the, uh, uh, A and B. If they have four or five different commissions, we really deplete the pool over a larger group. And I think we're going to wind up with not enough candidates, which is a process that we have right now when we don't, uh, codify and bring them all together at one time. So I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not supportive of doing that. The term limits one is an interesting question. Uh, there are members on some committees that have been on for, gosh, ten years or longer, and the value they bring to that commission of their experience and history. And we especially had this on, on Parks and, I mean, but on the A and B, when we had a, a huge exodus of, of, of individuals and we lost our, uh, uh, city representative who had all the history. Uh, and it turned out that there was two members that really provided a lot of input to keep us back on track and, and remember the history and, and, and to not repeat mistakes that might have been made in the past. I like the fact that on term limits, every person who's reapplying has to go back into the interview pool. Every person has to, you know, uh, has a chance to represent themselves. And the chairperson of that committee, along with the council members that are interviewing, have the opportunity to say yay or nay. So if we have a term limit on someone, we don't have the opportunity to say yay or nay. We can't get, giving that away. If, if, if we say, um, that, uh, you can only go for two terms and then you're out. Uh, if we don't do that, then the third time that person applies, if we don't have term limits, we can make that decision. We can say, are they a strong contributor? Do we want them to stay on that commission? So, um, I, I, I don't support t- term limits. I like the fact that they can continue to reapply as long as we keep the interview process going. I think that's, that's, um, very, uh, very important. Um, let's see, I think everybody's, I don't want to repeat everything that everybody else has said. Candidate pool, challenged interviews. Um, I like, and I think the boards and the commissions would welcome a review of the operating rules that would give them clarity. Uh, that, that's, that's fine. That's what they've been asking for. They would welcome that. Um, and I think, uh, doing that is a very smart move and I think will be well received. Um, my last one, which isn't something we've been asked to make a decision on, but I wanted to put my two cents in, is the, the fact that to be elected to a position in this city, you have to be a citizen within and reside within the city limits. Understand. To be a, somebody who wants to apply their time and volunteer on one of their boards to make it a contingency that they have to be a, 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 a reside within the city limits, I think is a mistake. Because there are a number of people who might happen to be just right across the street from our, our city limits, which are lim, somewhat limited. We have a small footprint. And we actually affect a lot of people outside of the city limits that come in here, that are part of the city, that are enjoying the city, that want to contribute to the city, but they can't serve on a board unless they live within the city. I would support, it's not what you asked, but I would support that we open, uh, boards up to people who are not citizens. Keep it with elected officials, but I don't think for volunteers, we need to limit them to be on one of our boards that they have to reside within their city limits. A lot of great people out there contributing a lot to our city and a lot that want to do more, but they just unfortunately live a couple of blocks outside of the city limits. So I think we would open up our candidate pool. And I think we would open up the opportunity for, for more talent that we're limiting ourselves on. And that is the end of my comments.
Thank you, city manager.
I hear a lot of, that could a lot of common concerns regarding the um, the, the amount of the pool of candidates you might get, the challenges you might get going forward. And I think what moving the, the theory behind moving these, the expiration date to one or at most two dates is to actually handle that and improve the recruiting process that staff can put forward, who may directly get more or better candidates if we have the time to prepare in the uniform dates across the year at two different points in time, if not one, for example. Uh, it's just a thought to put forward. Because the, the recruiting process now, really, we don't really have one. As you know, we put, we put out on social and, uh, it goes out for a few weeks and, um, but I think if we make more of an effort to do that, it might change things. So I just wanted to provide that input. Thank you.
Thank you. And back to council member Duque. Oops, I silenced you again.
Okay, now it's on. Thank you. This power of yours. Use it, use it with me all the time. Um, my, so I, I, uh, two comments, but one was just a follow-up on the conversation. We have to remember that they're already staggered. They're, the way that there are currently are volunteers that they're staggered from when they're joined. So that could be something in the language. You know, that there's certain positions that are, you know, so it's not, we're doing a, a refill of everyone and every position. Uh, but I do respect and understand the, the seven in our timing and, and how that would look. So I would definitely be in support of, um, having it two times a year. And I, I say that because I do think there is something really great about having kind of a, like a drive towards volunteers of having like, this is the time to volunteer for these boards. There's something when it comes to marketing and, and communication that like just help of like, this is your chance to give back to your, to your, um, to your city. And whether it's in, in, uh, you know, it's in the spring because we don't want to mess with elections in the fall or however that might look. You know, there's all that kind of language. I think that's really important. Um, uh, and then I just, uh, I really appreciated, um, council member Steckler's, uh, comments about, um, having people from outside of Mill Creek be able to volunteer, um, because I actually was the opposite. I felt that the design review board should be just Mill Creek residents because there's that aspect. But I, I have not officially attended a disa, design review board because we haven't had any since I was put on as, um, someone not to vote. I'm just a, a watcher, um, on that. But I do remember when we did interviews, um, chatting with the members and then people who were interviewing, who were actually all for reappointments, that they talked about, um, just the businesses that they were a part of. And so there was something to that of like, oh, business members, you know, who want to have a, um, a voice in the city who, you know, don't, who don't vote for our elections or, or that kind of aspect. So I, I see what you're saying and I, I would be, um, I would be, um, uh, agreeable to, to, um, to open it up, um, to residents. I think right now, I'm, I'm probably not only because I'm hopeful that by having a recruitment push and really like focusing, we can get more residents, but I wouldn't, I, if like that ever came to being a vote or something like that, I would, I, I, I definitely see it. I think there's also an opportunity to make sure that we're promoting things that are, um, or, and maybe it's not us, maybe it's us individually and not the city, but promoting opportunities for volunteer things when it comes to the county. Um, and getting our represent, representation that way, um, not just the, for unincorporated areas, but you know, there are, there are committees like that, one arts one that I mentioned, and there's just, there's a few that we could be trying to get our, um, our Mill Creek residents a part of. And then, um, making sure those that don't, you know, they're joining the parks one for, um, Snohomish County. And that's it.
Um, thank you. And Um, thank you, and. I think I'm going through the questions, only waiting the one. So I do agree that they should be able to be reappointed, and it probably would make sense to have it codified that you that that you are eligible for a reappointment, however that needs to be worded. I'm also, I'm not in favor of term limits at this time. I can see that. There, maybe there could be some boards that you might would want to try to term limit some people out, but I feel like if there's nobody else. Applying, then why would we um, hamper ourselves? And I kind of feel like that's on us. If we feel like somebody's been. We we have good candidates and somebody has been. On there forever and we feel like they need to be replaced and we need to make that decision when we interview that they, that they should be replaced with someone. I think it does make sense to have the the boards' uniform and all be seven. Um, that makes perfect sense to me. And then, like I said, the I have the concern about the expiration dates, but I do think that um, you have like two or if you have them all. That is come, but we we would need to make sure that we were staggering when the the interviews were going to be. Over a month or two and not have them um, all at once. And yes, we should um, review and approve each board commission operating rules. Also, I'm gonna throw in um. On councilmember Duke Hayes' um, comment regarding the application for the boards. Agree that it does need to be updated because it's the same application for every single board. So then we end up getting somebody that's applying for the arts beautification. That's answering all the things about the parks board. It's not even relevant to what they're coming in to be doing that day. And so everybody's got the same application. And so there's just a lot of things on there that's just not pertinent to what we're actually interviewing them for that evening. I say evening, I guess doesn't have to be evening, but um, and then also, I'd like to ask Grant um, about any precedent regarding having. Members that are not residents of the city be on boards and commissions.
No, yeah, thank you, Mayor Tim. Um, it is unusual to have non-residents who are. Uh, would be appointed to boards and commissions. It's not unusual for a specialty type board such as the design review board. That has a quasi judicial function uh, in looking at specific projects and bringing their own uh, expertise to the fore. To to have, uh, to 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 sometimes not have all be entirely residents. So that that there is some precedent for that, but typically most cities. Do you want a residency requirement? It it's not, it's not required by state law, uh, but it's something that's typically done.
Perfect, thank you um, for that answer. Um. I feel like I prefer for it to be um, a resident. Um, I feel like. The boards are here to make our city better, and I do, I agree that other people that don't live in the city come in and. Utilize the city or businesses utilize the city, but for those of us who are actually living here and paying taxes here. Um, I I want them to be the volunteers that are shaping what we're doing in the city because they. They're the ones who've chosen to live here and pay their taxes here, and I feel like their voice should be heard. Should there ever be any discussion? Otherwise, I would hope that there would be some discussion on limiting how many um. Were allowed to be on the board that were not. Right, instead of just opening it up to anybody, because then you can have a board that's all people who don't even live here. Um, they just don't have, it's just not the same when you don't live here. So that's my opinion on that. So other than us doing the motion on whether or not we want to um. We're going to change the dates. For their meeting. Do you have what you needed from us?
Yeah, I I think we generally do. We have some direction. I think what we're hearing is that there's. An interest in in having the eligibility for a reappointment specifically stated and codified. That there's a a reluctance to uh, uh, place term limits on at this time. That the boards and I've heard at least two council members say that there's support for uh, the size of the boards being. Uniform, that means we would be adding two positions to two boards. Uh, if I've heard that correctly, uh, and then also in terms of the expiration dates. It sounds as though that there would be support for. Uh, trying to find maybe two times of year when we'd open up uh, the commissions and boards and we will figure out which ones, but right now we have two that. End on the same date, so the question is what to do with the other two, and we'll we'll work on something and bring something back to you in that regard. Uh, and then I heard uh, uniformity on one, making sure we have. Uh, operating uh, rules for each of the boards and commissions and that you all see them and approve them. Did I miss anything?
I don't think so. Um, before we do the next motion, though, um, councilmember Duque, did I just forget to clear you or did you?
No, it was, I was gonna say, can I move to adopt? I was gonna. Put the motion forward. That's why my my um, button was up, but it looks like councilmember Stecker wants to say something.
That's what I was gonna say.
Just a a a couple of comments. If if we do look to say. Staggering um, the reappointments to a couple of different times, just a recommendation I would make from history that I've seen. The challenge of staffing both Parks and Rec and A and B at the same time. A lot of the same people apply across those two boards. So if we could stagger those, so they're not at the same time. And A and B has always had a challenge getting to five members, so. Getting to seven members is going to increase the challenge to arts beautification substantially. So. Again, if we do stagger them, my recommendation would be don't put those two in the same renewal period. I think it would help with the candidate pool. Um, and I I hear what everyone says about uh, out of, out of uh. City limit uh, uh, individuals, and I'm fine with that either way. I. One last gasp I'd make on that is where that thought comes from is I I work. As you know, with a lot of the nonprofits like the Kiwanis and Rotary and. Uh, I was just at the chamber meeting that you were all, most of you were at. And it's interesting to me that all those groups don't limit their attendance to within the city limits. And uh, that is an interesting factor of their, their their pool of people that they draw, and they draw a lot of people. That really want to contribute, but because they love this place, but they don't live in the city limit. And it gives them a chance to contribute in those or in those associations and organizations. I do think it would definitely increase our our candidate pool, and we hold the final decision in the interview process. Whether or not that particular individual makes sense, but I'll go along with the, that was kind of like last gasp. I go along with the uh, this is just a a chance to have, you know, your put, I love a study session, your input brought in, so. Just want to make those two, last two comments.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Duque.
Move to adopt an ordinance amending MCMC four dot thirty one zero four zero to start. Set the art and beautification board regular meeting to the fourth Wednesday of the month.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any discussion? Any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you very much, council.
Okay, um. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Um, it was supposed to be Mayor Holzclaw and Councilmember Allison. I have reviewed. I've reviewed the vouchers, so um. I'm good. Um, so, but I'll let you make the. Yeah. Or see, or see, or.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes. Um, I make a motion to approve the.
I think we have.
Oh, no, yeah.
Oh, do I say? Any exceptions?
No exceptions.
Then we give payroll and benefit ACH payments in the amount of two twenty five, eight, ten, seventy four. Any exceptions?
No exceptions.
Um, okay, now do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
That's next.
Don't we usually just do that with a consent agenda? Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Okay, um. Did you do a motion?
No, I'll make a motion to. Accept the consent agendas and the wire transfers.
Have a motion? Do I have second?
Second is.
Well, the wire transfer is just a consent agenda, but the wire transfers are part of the consent agenda, so. Yes, a motion to prove the consent agenda. In a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Next up, we have reports, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. First item is, which we may not need, is I was supposed to bring up whether we need a special meeting on four eighteen, April eighteenth. We will be holding the April fourth meeting. Given the number of items that we have, administrative items that we can put through on that first week, so. I'm not sure if. Actually, holding a special meeting is something that uh, is necessary about uh, when to bring that forward, call of council.
Right, do we have um, do we have a quorum next week?
With councilmember Paddock out.
I'm out.
And I'm out.
He's out.
Okay, perfect.
And we have.
Okay, perfect. Sorry, I was just checking, I just want to make sure councilmembers. Perfect.
Yeah.
So we should be good.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So I guess we want to address a special meeting.
Did you? Did you need a?
No, no.
Based off of the overall schedule? It was only if we didn't have a meeting next week, then you would do it. Okay, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Next is employee updates. So I'd like to uh, congratulate Naomi Fay. We're taking the acting tag off of her. Uh, title, and so she is now our permanent HR manager. So, welcome Naomi, thank you. Also, who is not present, Justin Horn, uh, associate planner. Uh, he has been hired as our planner, so I'd like to congratulate Justin Horn as well. And we do have a passport person that we actually is working. Uh, temporarily for us. Um, Andrea, I don't know if her last name will, but. But no, sorry, Andrea Bado. So uh, she was uh, one of our passport workers that we we were, she's she's excited to be working in that position temporarily. Uh, while Justin is out, so. While that position is vacant, sorry. And then city chat update.
Sorry. Can I ask a question? So you're saying someone who's in passport is now going to planning?
Early in the.
Into temporary?
Associate.
Associate planning.
Right, temporarily.
Okay.
Yeah, for for a few months while Justin's, Justin is out, out. Because he he's in the planner position, but she's just filling in temporarily until we um. Well, he's out.
He he's out, or did he get moved?
Oh, I'm sorry, he is on paternity leave, right? Is that correct?
Right, so he'll be out.
So Justin was promoted to be planner.
Congratulations.
Yes.
But now he's out.
He's out for twelve weeks on paternity leave, starting in about two weeks.
Beautiful.
Andrea is going to fill in. Behind him, learning his job starting this week to be the building permit. Intake function primarily. We cannot go without that.
Correct.
While Justin is gone. So he's been doing some training with her this week and next week. Then she'll be running the building permit, all those kinds of permits that come through, and then also handling other kind of administrative things.
Can I tell you how much I love that? Just the growth and like being able to like see something and opportunity and and be able to flag that. Not, you know, it's okay if some employees don't. Want to do that, you know, and they're happy with whatever it is and they continue to be happy, but it's fantastic that you guys have been able to. See that and create these types of opportunities for whatever it might be. That's a um, that tells me that. We have city staff. I mean, I already know you guys are great, but it it tells me that you guys really care about growth and making sure that it's um. A a really great machine. I just really appreciate that. Thank you very much for clarifying.
Thanks, Mike. So city chat, I'm not gonna update on city chat because Barb gave a good update, so um. We'll let that one go. Lobby days, deputy city manager, myself, got a chance to to drive down to Olympia. Met with uh, our state electeds, uh, Senator Levick, representatives Berg and Donahue. Donahue. Long trip for fifteen minute meetings, but it was well worth it. Uh, I think uh, the. Our um, city electors will be taking our place next year, uh, probably with with staff support going down there as well, so. We were uh, welcomed, the representation for city Mill Creek, so I just wanted to relay that, that Senator Levick and a representative did appreciate. Our presence there, so. It was a good trip, learning about um. The areas that they cover. Their specialties, uh, and they gave us a good uh, glimpse of kind of what they work on. And um, encouraging us to continue reaching out to them throughout the year. So this will be part of our process that we start in May. And um. It was just a good trip, so thank you. There's no other questions. I'll hand this over to our uh, deputy director of public safety, Eric Chartran, to go ahead.
Councilmember Duque has a question.
Thank you.
I promise I had my my um, light up. I was curious about this process. Do you then also, I I heard you met with our representatives, do you? Or is it the intent for future years to also meet with neighboring um, representatives? Since you're already down there?
I don't know specifically. I I I just know that it's um, our forty-fourth district representative that we should be meeting with.
Of course.
In addition, probably our King, uh, King of Snohomish County as well. Uh, representatives as well, because we be not only working closely with them, but there there are grant funding opportunities that come from the county as well.
No, that makes so much sense. It's just more of the, uh, you know, have we, have we in the past, or have we? Um, just stopped by and said hi to the ones who are not our actual representatives, but to show that we're. That we're there and these are the things that, hey, your neighbors are interested in this and hearing from um, us, or is it just? That their their schedules are just too full, so it's hard to get in.
Yeah, I I don't know. I couldn't answer that one for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Economic alliances. So in the past years, Economic Alliance has done a good job of kind of helping the whole Snohomish County Coalition go down and try to get everybody out of their offices, and so that big group. Often puts up poster boards, here's the projects we want to talk about, but tries to get people to come like the leader of the Senate. Transportation Committee or whatever, so you might get Senator Leos to come, whereas we probably couldn't drop in and get fifteen minutes with us. Not, no, none of us could. Necessary because he's a busy guy, but one of you could. Challenge, there you go, challenge down. But sometimes that kind of thing is going on. I don't know if they did that this year, but that's, I would recommend elected officials watch for those opportunities to go down in in groups. To do those lobby day things, either lobby days like the mayor and mayor, excuse me, the city manager, deputy city manager went and did with AWC, or you look for that. Economic Alliance, Snohomish County Coalition.
Thank you for that. I'm. I I was, I I think the word I I should have said was, oh, um, not just like neighboring, but also are there any um, like the committee chairs or things that we're kind of keeping an eye on? Um, that kind of like, have we done that before?
Um, I was just gonna point out that Redberg did take um, the city manager and deputy city manager around to meet. Someone, um, you will need to fill me in, Martin, um, that was involved with um, overseeing where the money goes.
Correct, if that's what you're referring to. Yes, we. We followed process, we, yeah, it was an interesting experience, um. Uh, working through the process and just kind of. Every meeting was a little bit different, and and what we did was um. Basically kind of mold ourselves to the, once we got there, we just kind of went with the flow. Although we had, I had an idea of kind of what I wanted to talk about. Some of the representative, representatives also had their goals, and what we had an opportunity to meet Representative Therenger. Who is the head of the uh, capital budget. Uh, committee there, so um. It was a two-minute meeting, um, so it was, yeah. So. Yeah, it was, yeah, thanks. No other questions? So with that, I'll hand this over to our deputy uh, director of public safety, who will report um. On the recent uh, happenings that we've had in the past um. Past week, uh, the twenty-first and twenty-second, we had three incidents over those two days, and he'll go into a little more detail. You've. All received the second press release that provided a little more detail on. And we don't probably have much more information, but he'll also elaborate on the collaboration that took place. With the initial fire, where we found the deceased, uh, they found the deceased in the garage. And support that the Mill Creek. Police Department gave uh, South County Fire. It was a tremendous effort by our deputy director and um, support from our Mill Creek PD, so Eric, thank you.
Mayor Potem and councilmembers, well, I'm very happy to be here and I'm happy here to uh, get a chance to. Um, talk about these events and the excellent work, not only by um, the Mill Creek police officers. But the South County Fire Department and the Snohomish County deputies who assisted uh, throughout the day. But the South County Fire Department and the Snowmish County deputies who assisted throughout the day. On the twenty-first, we had a burglary situation where a suspect was found in a home and was arrested without incident. He was then later booked into Snowmish, uh, Snowmish County Jail for resburg and a bail was set. The twenty-second was a very busy day for our officers in this area law enforcement. It started in the early morning hours when an Everett officer was shot, as well as returning fire and killing a suspect. That incident resulted in our, one of our detectives, who's part of the smart team Detective White, responding and assisting processing that scene. And of course, professional, excellent, great work as always. Early in that afternoon on the twenty-second, we had a responded to a house fire. And that house fire was being handled, of course, by South County Fire. We arrived and assisted with traffic control and scene security. Uh, when I arrived on the scene, I was greeted by a, uh, just a great group of guys that were. Doing the best to, to work together and we, I quickly understood that this was a, just, just a, a great environment. To. Make sure the right outcome occurs, it was decided at that point in time that the investigation would be handled by the Fire Department. Until anything criminal in nature would, would come up, and at that point in time, we would be ready to transition to a actual criminal investigation. And that never occurred at this scene, it was at this point in time determined as accidental. Although the investigation is still pending going forward. And then in the afternoon, we had the stabbing at the Thomas Lake Center. Where two juvenile males got into a verbal confrontation with a male suspect. That suspect fled, or the, the juveniles attempted to flee when the suspect brandished a knife by running into the Dollar Tree store. And thankfully. These, I should say, you know, one of the, one of the victims was, was attacked. Thankfully, the citizens there were there, as well as the worker intervened and stopped the assault from occurring. Like I said, it was a very busy day, the officers, Sergeant Connor, Corporal Eichenberry. Officer Bridgman and Student Officer Peterson did an unbelievable job, that was the same shift the entire day that they had to deal with. And they just did an incredible job and we all should be proud. And that's what I have as far as those updates. Any questions?
Any questions? No questions, thank you for, for that update and keeping us appraised of everything that's going on.
Now we have Director Todd reporting on code updates. Code update for fire inspection, light rail and fireworks sale prohibition.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Council and City Manager. It's been three months, we had hoped by now to have resolution on how we were going to figure out how to charge money for fire inspections. And we've been struggling along with this, remember, we got essentially no records from server during COVID, inspections just didn't happen, so we've been trying to re, recreate those. South County Fire have been trying to recreate those, but working really hard at that, looking at the most important properties first. From our side, we were looking at if we, we need to implement a code that gives us the, the authority to charge a fee. The only two jurisdictions that we were aware of around here that were charging a fee was South, it was Snowmish County themselves. Which serves part of South County Fire's territory, but not the parts in cities and the city of Everett. And so we were headed along the path of figuring out the right fees for that, but then we couldn't quite, quite figure out how to collect those, if we issued somebody an invoice. How do we collect, we don't do any billing for utilities anymore, so that was kind of a stumbling block, we looked at having the county. Do it much as we do our surface water fees, where you put it as an annual fee, so we're kind of headed down that path, kind of stalled out because the county wasn't really. Interested in doing that, they had other things like an election going on. What happened since then is that it turns out that South County Fire has got a new tool that's very close to being implemented called First Do. Picture it is a handheld device that the fire staff has, that GIS based. So when they go up to a building, they know some features of that building, they know where to find the Knox box, they know where the, where the alarm panel is, they know where the fire. Fire water risers are, and they might also know that there's two dogs and a cat, three kids. An invalid that lives upstairs, so all kinds of information is a fantastic tool, well, it turns out that tool has the ability to collect some data. On the fire inspection, issue a fire inspection report and also invoice, and so that's the magic. In the last week and a half, we figured this out and had a great meeting, Justin had a great meeting today, that it turns out it's not just invoice, it's very flexible invoicing. And in fact, starting about July, they also could take a credit card, so if somebody says, here's the invoice, you know, the guy does the inspection, here's your invoice for. Hundred and three dollars for inspecting your restaurant. Would you like to pay now or by credit card, or would you like us to mail you a bill? In the process of doing that, we will be collecting, or South County Fire will be collecting their email address, their contact information, so all those things that we didn't have before. To communicate with his business, so it's a fantastic tool that just kind of, I wouldn't say it fell into our lap, we just didn't know that was, was coming through. But by working closely with South County Fire, that's kind of where we are. Justin, you just heard, is gonna go off on paternity leave in a couple of weeks, but he thinks before he leaves, he can prepare, working with Grant, an ordinance. For us to have the authority to start collecting a fee, and if we get, if we get a chance, we'll try to get that done while he's gone. By ordinance, we would get the authority, we'll work with Grant on this, and then by resolution, we would set a fee table. We've talked, you've heard Laurel and Armina talk before about updating our fees, we think this one, we want to kind of go sooner to start collecting some money. Take a first shot at it, but get it going, but I'm hopeful that by June. When Justin comes back, he can help us finish that work of setting the right kind of fees for the size of the building, the type of use. How many times I gotta go back, charge them extra if they're really difficult, you know, whatever it is, all this things that is tools and help us, we'll have that going. So we'll be collecting fees by the second half of the year, not what we hope for, but I think it's gonna be a really good solution, so this is just, I want to give you the update that we are not. Pausing on this, not stalled on this anymore, I think we got a good, good path forward, any questions on that?
Good news.
They've got, it's, it's fantastic, you think about the fact that they could collect information. You as a home, I think the way this works is you as a homeowner will have an opportunity to say grandma lives downstairs, there is a dog and a cat and two kids. Et cetera, I think you can volunteer that information, so you can think about that, when, when an event happens, they know where to go hunting for. Somebody in the front bedroom or the back, whatever, so that's a really cool opportunity, so I'm sure they will roll that out and tell us more when they're ready. Second topic is the letter that I think we can get Joe to put it up there, I apologize, it's on your table in front of you, but people on TV land can see it. This is the draft letter. TV land, I'm pretty old. You could tell me where that came from, I don't know. Don't know where that came from. Talked to you last week or two weeks ago about the light rail community. Urban core subarea plan the county's putting together, so just like we're putting together comprehensive plan for our city, they're putting a comprehensive plan for the county. And we have that one section, they're creating a new plan for that urban core subarea that's between us and I five. All the way over to Linwood and Muckelteo and Everett, so it is all between all these cities. Big challenge, we appreciate the fact they're doing that, they had, give, gave everybody an opportunity to comment between March first, when they issued it, and March thirty-first, it's Friday. So I'm gonna look for your permission to. Send this letter, have you as council send this letter out, so we drafted it to be over the mayor's signature, but really speaking on your behalf. Don't want to go through all the words, if you want to find some words, there's a couple typos. But if you want to find some words or suggest some words, we happy to do that, but just briefly, I want to walk through the paragraphs and, and get your general concurrences, this is the message you like to send as a council. I will say we'll also send a staff letter, but it will be more detailed about. This word is a typo, or this word's confusing, or those kinds of things, but this is intended to be kind of a council level, level letter, so overall, it starts off by saying. Thank you for the opportunity, we really want to work together closely on this, remind them that this is our UGA, not just the county as a neighboring thing. So that's kind of the first paragraph, the first, first paragraph after, after specific goal comments, it starts off with a very broad one. I've quoted it there, support development in the urban core subarea that meets the housing, employment, services and transportation needs of communities. I've agreed that overall, that's a great way to go, but then the second paragraph. It, it talks about supporting the communities that reside, work and recreate within that area. And the point I'm trying to make here is that there's going to be people from Mill Creek and other places who travel to that area. To either get on transportation called light rail, or to go there and shop, and so I think their, their plan ought to consider those folks too, not just those who live there. But also the, the people have that as a destination, so that's that second paragraph. Uh, third paragraph, I'm trying to drive home, we're, we're trying to drive home, that it's not good enough, they talk about neighboring cities. And I wanted to have the concept of being a partner, we, Linwood, Muckelteo, Everett, I don't know what they'll write in their letters, but I think we need to be considered a partner in this area. Not just a neighboring city, so I'm asking to be a little bit closer to the table, now I've also recognized that we don't have a lot of staff time to help them. They weigh out, outnumber us in staff, hands down, and they're ahead of us in the process. But I'm, I'm suggesting that between you as electeds and the electeds of the county and senior staff, at least, we ought to be able to sit down and say, let's work together on this. Not just talk about being neighbors and go off on our separate directions, so it's a huge commitment that I don't know how we could fulfill, but I think it's incumbent on. Us to at least try to be at the table. And so it's gonna rely, gonna rely on you as council member to reach out to our council member, we're District Four, and I can't remember which council member. This probably, uh, it used to be Stephanie Wright, is it still, took Stephanie's?
Strom Peterson now is, um.
No, because he, no, I'm thinking for a county.
No, Strom Peterson is also, yes, he, he is Stephanie's replacement.
Okay, so, so probably Strom would also be for this area, I think if you go west of Third, it switches to a new council district. So probably a matter of, maybe like senior staff and council members talking about this, not just having planning staff do their merrily. Very going on their way with their work, so that's suggesting that in that paragraph. The last paragraph on the first page, I'm agreeing, we're seemingly agreeing with this goal four point two, talking about connections of parks. Open spaces and things like that, and to name some of the parks that are in our UGA that are even within this area, so I'm just, no disagreement there. The top of the second page. They say the right words, but I think it's really important, and it, it's, it's going to be affected by the legislation fifty-four sixty-six that we were talking about earlier. Fifty-four sixty-six doesn't do a very good job of tapering from high density, high. High housing and other, other development right around light rail stations tapering off in the neighborhoods. But they've, they've got in their goal five point three, this idea of tapering, I'm just concurring that that taper is really important. Lots of height, lots of density right next to I five, makes a lot of sense, but when we get to single family homes in Mill Creek, there's got to be a, a way that that makes sense. So it'd be dense around the corridors, but calm down other places, so saying that's important, we'd like to work with them on that. Second paragraph on that, I've got some concerns, I'm hoping you have those same concerns. Again, state legislation and everybody talking about affordability, they're looking for more affordable housing units close to light rail. And if it's more affordable housing, close to light rail, the assumption is people don't need cars. So the state legislature and this plan evidence, let's have fewer required parking places for these denser, more affordable. Housing units. The assumption is people can just park on the street like you would in Seattle. I'm afraid about those people just parking on the street and the people from Mill Creek or Silver Furs or. Wherever who want to get to transit or want to get to these businesses are gonna drive there because they can't get there. Because orange line doesn't get all the way to their house, we are gonna show up in our cars and go, where do I park, and so I'm concerned about that conflict, so I get it, the planners like to say. Let's reduce the amount of parking, that's expensive. It takes away from affordability, but I think there's a potential conflict, that's a long paragraph trying to say, we gotta think about that and. Really want to think about how they reduce the amount of parking over time, don't rush that, is what I'm trying to say there. Uh, next one, goal five point one two. They talk about temporary structures, I think some people got really creative and said, gosh, look at all the cool things that happened during COVID, people put up streeteries, put up. Temporary structures, but the wording in their thing talks about things like shipping containers. And I just can't picture shipping container as a temporary structure being the kind of thing we might want in that neighborhood, and so I'm trying to make a point that I think you still have to. The same quality and care in temporary structures. So I'm trying not to stamp, not to stomp on the creativity part of it, but I don't think we want to see a lot of weird things up there that would reflect poorly on the kind of. Quality we think of in Mill Creek, because this might be Mill Creek someday. And maybe the way you get out of that is to say temporary is a month or two, not temporary like a year. And you also got to, also got to respect the fact that somebody just put a million dollars into a nice facade on the building and the guy across the street can put in a. A plastic tent, I, I don't know how you deal with that, so I don't have an answer here, hopefully our staff will have some other ideas, we'll get into some discussions, but that's, I'm pushing back politely. On something that sounds cool that I think is difficult. And the last one, overall, it's the same thing, we, we have to take more density, we have to deal with housing issues, and the last one, I'm saying. We'd like to support that, but they introduced two terms called light rail communities and mixed-use corridors, they don't really define in their plans, so I'm kind of asking them subtly. To think about what that means, where they're talking about putting those other kinds of housing products. So, a lot of talking there, and I apologize, I only gave it to you just now to look at it, but if you have any thoughts of things we'd. Add to it or take out, things that make you uncomfortable, things you think we ought to amplify, the intent is to get this issued by Friday, because that's the deadline for public input.
Any comments? Um, Councilmember Duque.
Thank you so much for all your work on this, I really appreciate it, and my only comments were all kind of typos and things like that, but you're saying that you flagged it already. Periods out of quotations, all that kind of stuff, so I will, thank you very much.
That's a challenge back, I got the right light that I found, but I'll find other stuff too. We, we did a little, uh, I don't know if you guys heard, we tested out the generator this afternoon, it ran well from about three fifteen till about five fifteen. We, we went dark in the other building for a while, so the generator in this building works great, we found out it powers most of the stuff except for the HVAC. So it was getting a little stuffy, at about five o'clock, we were going, where do we have a fan in here so you guys don't sweat like whatever? And then the power came back on, so we're happy that happened. Other comments, questions, was cleaned up?
Anybody else have any comments? Um, Councilmember Allison?
After a quick review, I don't have any problem with anything that you've documented here. Councilmember Duque has a few grammatical things she could offer that might improve it. And I appreciate that you're on top of all of that, so thank you.
I'll say, let's give you twenty-four hours, if you got, if you see something tonight you want to scratch up and hand it to me, or you see something after you slept on it, that'd be great. Will give, still give us a day or two to get it done, I, I guess I'll ask that question, I copied the mayor, the count, from the mayor, copy the council, copied a bunch of staff. I didn't know how we want to present this to our county council people. Because normally this is going to the staff, it'd be like going to the planners. Is who this is directed to, so do, maybe, I'm wondering if maybe there's another cover. That comes from the council that goes to their council, says, hey, we've submitted this comment letter, we really like to get together with you guys and talk about stuff. Or I don't know what, how you do that, but maybe, maybe not try to get that done by Friday, but maybe you, you seven would think about how you would like to. Engage with county council, if that makes sense, I think about it.
Yeah, should we send it to just our county council member, or should we send it to the entire council, or?
I'd be tempted to send it to Councilmember Mead and then copy all the rest of them, but. You might think about that, I'm not quite sure. But I think, I think it's your, your call and your decision, I think has, staff, we happy to, to support you, I'm just suggesting, I think it makes sense to tell the county council. You'd like to engage in, in a nice discussion instead of throwing rocks at their staff and then running, so. But we do that, we can do that later.
Um, Councilmember Duque.
So I'm in agreement with sending it to all of the Snowmish County Councilmembers, and to make it easier, I think it should just be a one line that says, we wanted to let you know. That we have shared this with, da, 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 and we would love to, we, not love, obviously it's a professional, we would. Appreciate the time to be able to discuss these things with you in person or over on a call. And like leave it there and just submit it, so they have the exact same language, so we're not like parcelling anything, that would be my personal recommendation in our little sub discussion.
And I think, and we'll see what everybody else thinks, I feel out of respect, it should go to Councilmember Mead. And copy everybody else, that everybody gets it, but that is, he's the main, since he is our representative. I'm not sure, um, how else, what everybody else's read on that is, I'm just trying to be respectful that, that, that he is our representative and. But yet, copy the rest of the council. I don't know if there are any other opinions on that. Councilmember Duque.
I think we could do too, we could just let him know that we're sending something and then send it to everyone, because then it, it should, there's a little bit about like, if you CC someone, they might. Not think it's about them, right, and so if you're saying we as a council, all of us are saying to you that we would like to get together. But, but I agree with you, there's always those complexities that maybe I'm, I'm not fully understanding all the time. So I would say, you know, there could be a, maybe a separate email. From the mayor to Councilmember Mead that says, just wanted to, you know, we have this discussion, we will be following up with you. To, to the whole, but we wanted to let you know something, something more informal. Um, that would be my recommendation.
Um, Councilmember Stakler.
Yeah, I, I would concur with that. I, I like the idea of giving, uh, Councilmember Mead a heads up. I like that, that's respectful and we have a relationship there. But I think it's also best for the council to receive it as one document from us to all council members. So I, I think the reaction from them will be better. I think the reaction will be better. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree. I like that, um, that we can, we can give, um, Councilmember Mead a heads up that this is coming, um, to the whole council, and then we can just send it to the whole council.
Yes, we'll prepare a short, I'm hearing a short cover that goes over this, that's the council of the council. With a phone call or an email to, uh, Councilmember Mead ahead of time. So he's not surprised. Yes, and we'll get, we'll engage the mayor in doing that. Thank you. And the last report I was supposed to give was about fireworks sale prohibition and our report that South County Fire did not advance that any further yet. I think that's still a good idea, but. I think I reported you last time, they might be going very quickly, and I wanted to have us prepped for if they were going to. Approve a letter on next Tuesday, the fourth. And send it in the next day. I didn't want us to miss the window, but they didn't do that. I know it's still a hot issue for them, but I'm sure we'll talk about it at the. April fourth meeting and I'll come back and keep you informed. Thank you.
Yeah, we have our finance director. Ms. Lombard presenting January, February, twenty twenty-three financial report.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, good evening again, Mayor Plutim. I am pleased to report our activities or actuals through February twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-three. But before we dive in. I'd like to talk about our, um, economic environment. Joe. Can I have control?
Um, yes, you have control. There should be a remote control for slides or.
I got it. Thank you. Um, so just giving you an overview of the economic environment, um, over the last, um, few months. The Bureau of Labor Statistics issued the Consumer Price Index for February, the twelve-month change. Um, from February twenty twenty-two to February twenty twenty-three is the U, the US national average is a six, six percent increase, while the Seattle metro area. Is still trending higher at eight point one percent. And then our national unemployment rate, which is a factor of the number of unemployed over the civilian labor force in the community, the February, um. Twenty twenty-three rate is at three point six percent, the national average, um, and then, uh, four point six percent in the Washington area. The Federal Open Market Committee, which, um, sets the nation's monetary policy. Um, to influence availability, cost of money and the credit to help promote national economic, um, goals met. Oh, twice in the last two months, three months, excuse me. And the committee reaffirmed their goal of promoting maximum employment, um, stable prices and, um. Moderate long-term interest rate, and they could achieve this by targeting a two percent inflation factor. And so based off of the March twenty twenty-two meeting, because they, they reviewed the economy and saw that we have moderate inflation, excuse me, moderate growth. In our economy and, um, collapse of the Silicon Valley Bank as well as the Signature Bank. Um, although those banks failed, um, the banking system remained sound and resilient. They are still watching. The development of this because they still have to figure out the extent of the effects of this bank. And so, um, factoring all of that's happening. They raised the federal funds rate again by, um, quarter basis point from four point five percent. To four point seventy-five percent. And so now moving on to our general fund, um, so just keep in mind that. Two months into the year represents roughly about eight point three percent of our biannual budget. Um, so over the last two months, the operation, in the operations, our general fund decreased, um, general fund resources by three hundred and ninety thousand. And this just means that in the last two periods, the revenues that were, that we received was less than what we, um, expended for that period. And so that's dipping into the fund balance that we have. Recall that, um, last month when I reported the year end. Um, we, I said that, um, we have two point two million in savings from twenty twenty-two, and so our fund balance at the beginning of January twenty twenty-three. Was about, um, nine million. So we have a healthy reserve. So looking at the, all the revenue sources here, the sales and use tax, um, represents about. Um, the December twenty twenty-two and January twenty twenty-three sales activity, and this number includes the public safety, affordable housing. Affordable and support housing as well as the criminal, um, justice sales tax portion. And, um, so as of twenty twenty-two, excuse me, as of February, um, we collected about eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, and that's about nine point four percent of our budget. But when you compare it year, um, month over year over year, January, February of twenty twenty-three versus twenty twenty-two, it's only a slight. Increase under one percent. Now, looking at the, um, the categories of just our regular sales tax, um, this one shows that. Of the regular sales tax portion for Jan, for twenty twenty-three, we have a three point seven million. Of budget right here. That's the budget. And to date, we have collected seven thousand, seven hundred, six thousand, and that's about nineteen percent of the three point eight million. In budget for that one year. Um, the highest, um, categories that have gains are still consistent in retail trade. Professional scientific services and miscellaneous, um, categories. And then the ones that are showing, um, significant declines are the. Excuse me, are the, um, construction and, um, manufacturing. And that's consistent with what we're seeing in the economics right now, that of the hard housing slowdown because of the interest rates now going up. So because then the, I think the average market rate, mortgage rates are around above six percent now. Okay, so this, this, um, chart just represents what we're seeing on a, um, month by month for the last four years. So this two, um, stacks right here represents January and February, and we're seeing high numbers here consistently, the trend. And that's because these two months would usually represent the activities from the prior holiday season. And then it drops off in April and May. So I'm, we're expecting that, um, next month and in April, those numbers would fall right around, um. Under three hundred thousand, but, um, I would expect that year over year, it might be slightly higher just because of inflation. Now, the other categories in our revenues that had, um, great, uh, I should say significant increases are the licenses and, um, permits. And this, uh, hundred and thirty-five thousand that we received, um, or nine point seven percent represents, um, the franchise fees that from cable and waste management. So this number represents quarter four of twenty twenty-two. And then our charges for goods and services, which includes, um, our passport processing fees, plant checks, um, inspection fees and field rentals posted. Two hundred and ten thousand or seven point seven for the biannual, um, budget. And then the miscellaneous revenue, which is surprisingly, not, maybe not surprisingly, our highest gain of fifty, almost fifty-five thousand for the first two months. Represents primarily our high investment returns. So eighty-nine percent of our investments are with the, um, local government investment pool. And their February twenty twenty-three earnings was at four point six percent compared to point zero one percent in February of twenty twenty-two. So generally, we expect, um, LGI ha, has been consistently following. The trend of the federal funds rate. So as the rates continue to go up, we would expect, um, higher investment returns. Um, so for the forecast for the revenues, um, I think it's too early to say. Otherwise, that whether we really have to make an adjustment or on our revenue. However, um, we think, um, based of what I'm seeing right now. Any shortfalls, um, I think can be, um, absorbed by the, um. Increased investment earnings that we're seeing right now, but it may not be sufficient depending on how big that number is. Um, but so we'll continue to monitor that, but also keep in mind that the reserve requirement for general fund is fifteen percent. Of the revenue for the next two biennium, and that's roughly about three point seven or four million dollars. And so, um, so again, our beginning fund balance for the general fund for twenty twenty-two, excuse me, twenty twenty-three. Was at, um, nine million, which includes the two point two million savings from, um, twenty twenty-two. And so it will, we will have enough buffer to cover any shortfalls, including, um, just as a reminder, the potential, um, salary adjustment from the guild. Are there any questions before I move to the next slide?
Councilmembers Stakler.
So just a couple of questions on the, um. Nine million. So you say that includes the, the little over two million that we saved. Does, and it does not include the ARP funds that are in that amount. I, I just wanted to confirm that. Uh, that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving into the general fund expenditures, um, to date, um, across all the departments. The, the, the general fund spent roughly about one point eight million or seven point seven percent of our budget. And so if I, if we peg that with, uh, um, eight point three percent. That I, which is equal to two months of, of budget, we're under budget right now in spending. So I think we're in a good spot. And so the one point seven million includes personnel cost of one point one million, um, as well as, um. Two hundred and eighty to three thousand, which is the annual, um, insurance premium for property and liability. And the rest are for M and O, which is about four hundred, um, thirteen thousand. And of that number, one hundred ninety-six is for contract services and, um. Within that number, we have seventy-six thousand for legal services. So, um. Pulling, um, comparing that or following, monitoring our legal expenses over the last five years. Um, seventy-five thousand represents about one month's worth of legal expenses. Our budget for twenty-three, twenty-four is about one point six million. Or what we should be spending is about sixty-seven thousand a month. Um, so if we do a straight line projection continuing at the seventy-six thousand, we, we would expect that we may likely, um, overspend. Um, our budget by about two hundred and thirteen thousand, but we will keep monitoring that number, um. And I'll make sure to support, you know, the city manager to, to, to stay under budget. Then moving into our special revenue funds, um, the big, the, this, the, the city streets and our C hall funds are our biggest, um. Um, changes at this time. And so the streets fund, the revenue to sixty thousand, eight hundred and ninety. And the, um, city hall north, they both represent, um, two months of revenue. For the city streets, that would be from the motor vehicle fuel tax, and then for the city hall north fund that represents the lease revenue. And everything else, eh, eh, all the other funds, uh, their, their revenues represent their share of the investment earnings. And then the, the special revenue funds on the expense side, um, pretty much the city streets and city hall north. Their expenses are consistent with general fund because we have two months' worth of personnel costs as well as M and O. Expenses in there. Now, this number that you're seeing with, uh, under the council contingents, contingency fund of three thousand, three hundred and ninety, that represents the. Payment for the utility box, um, artwork at, uh, one thirty-second Street Southeast and Twenty-Fifth Avenue. And questions?
A question on that one. That was a, an expense, that was a two thousand twenty-two expense, I thought, and I thought it was paid out.
Been approved in twenty twenty-two, but we actually paid for it in twenty twenty-three. Because you, you have to remember that, uh, the city's, um, is on a cash basis. And so we actually issued, we cut the check in twenty twenty-three. And so that would be a twenty twenty-three expenditure.
I understand that. I, I, I'm just surprised to see it on twenty-three because I, I'm, I'm, I seem to remember it, the bill coming in and all of that's. Early in twenty twenty-two. In, uh, and I'm surprised, I, I, I remember when it came in and it was like. You know, wait, quite a bit before the end of the year, when, when the project was completed and the bill had come in and the invoice had come in. So I'm surprised it became a twenty-three expense when the check was cut. I'm surprised it wasn't cut in twenty-two. Because it seemed to be more than enough time. So I'm just surprised to see that.
I can check on the timing and get back to you on that.
Would you? Yeah.
I, I can follow up on that. I actually approved that invoice. Um, I believe they brought that to us after it was completed. Um, I believe it was last month. And I was shocked that we hadn't got that invoice yet.
Yeah, that is very interesting. Surprising.
Okay, um, Councilmember Duque has a question.
So, but we are still putting it under council contingency because it was something we approved from last year instead of putting it in the munis, municipal arts fund. Right? So direction was to take it out of the city, um, council contingency fund, which is why we did that. Right, but that was because it was, it was over last year. I mean, I'm not saying to change it. I'm not saying to move it, but I'm just trying to understand.
So typically for any kind of unexpected expense, and since that was an unexpected expense, we left that where it had been approved.
Thank you, Laura. Um, Councilmembers Stakler.
Yeah, I was just gonna, uh, confirm that same thing that, the reason why it's under the, uh, council contingency is. We asked for the money to come out of council contingency when it came in, and so, um. Seems like that, that, that's what was said. It just seems like that we need a little more research on the, where the invoice came in and what happened. Yeah.
Will do. Okay, moving on to our capital projects fund. Um, the real estate, uh, excess tax fund, the revenues of a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars is, um. Again, the tax collected on every sale of real property in the, um, city of Mill Creek. And this represents the December twenty twenty-two to January twenty twenty-three sales transaction. And, um, again, with the housing slowdown and the increasing federal rates, um. We need to watch this closely because, um, there, we might run into, you know, revenue challenges that for, for this, uh, specific revenue. And, um, so if, um. If we compare the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two actuals. We are, the collection was about three point eight million and, um, last year, the last two biennium, which was about forty-five percent of, uh, above what we budgeted. Um, but then the environment, the economic environment at those two time periods are so different than what we're, we're experiencing now. And so I just want us to be mindful. Um, and I'll keep monitoring and raising, um, issue or raising the, um, development of this, um, revenue in the next, um, years as we move along. And so we expect that if we do not meet our revenue target of three point seven million, then we will make recommendations at mid-year. To, um, adjust our expectations as well as to adjust any CIP projects that may be affected at this time. So we will work closely with, um, to departments to, um, make the appropriate recommendations. Um, and then the other, other revenues in these funds that we're seeing are all related to just the investment, the each fund's share of the investment earnings overall. The enterprise fund, uh, we only have one here, and that's the surface water utility, the hundred and sixty thousand in revenue represents about the, um. The November through December twenty twenty-two collections of the surface water fees that are on the property tax bills. And then, um, the expenditures are also consistent with the general fund. We have, um. Payroll expenses here as well as two months of the catch basin and. We have payroll expenses here as well as two months of the catch basin and or surface water inspection services. And then lastly, our equipment replacement fund. We have expenses of seventy two thousand seven hundred and forty seven. And this is the cost of the police interceptor vehicle number forty five. This was approved way back in January of twenty twenty two, but the bill was paid. Toward the end of January, so we're seeing it reflected in, in our numbers for this year. And that ends my report, are there any other questions?
Councilmember Stakler?
Yeah, I understand cash-based financing and that's, your reports make total sense. My concern is that it doesn't really give us an idea of performance. If we, if I look at a, you know, a two-year biennial budget and then how much we've spent in the last, the first two months of the year. Doesn't tell me if that's a, really a good or bad thing, only if we have enough cash to support what we're doing. And what I'm concerned about is, you know, coming two, three months from now, when you come back to us and say we need to revise the budgets, we need to, you know, ask for more. That, that's what I would rather not be surprised by, and so when I look at financials, and I've asked for this since. Since I sat on the seat, I always like to look at how we are, how we are doing against what we budgeted we would spend in those two months. Not what we budgeted for the first two years. So that I could see if we're ahead or behind, or if there's a particular area of concern of. And so when I, I would love to see financials that, that show us performance, you know, what we budgeted year to date. And what our performance is year to date and what the variance is, because that gives me an idea of where there might be areas of surprise, areas of. Either opportunity or challenge, and I won't be surprised by them, because I really can't tell by this. What particular areas, except for your comments, you might be coming back to us asking for our money, and I heard a few different times of that. So that, that kind of concerns me that we might have to adjust the budgets a few areas, we don't know. And so I'd like to see financials that are based on year-to-date budget versus year-to-date performance. So that I can get an idea of how, how we're tracking going forward, just a request, I would ask for that. Because I don't know right now from what I'm looking at. You know, what, where we're going to, how, how our performance is in particular areas. I also see a whole bunch of areas here where we, not a whole bunch, but a few areas. Where expenses from twenty two got moved into twenty three because the invoices didn't get allocated in twenty two. And that's something I've seen year after year, we'll see on this seat. And it always gives you a challenge going into the new year, so I gotta find, it's gotta be a way that we can rectify that going forward. And getting, collecting invoices and getting them paid because. The interceptor wasn't a surprise unless you took possession of the interceptor, you know, in twenty three. But like that surprise on the, 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 the. A and B project, the rap. Yeah, that, that's concerning because that's happened before. We come to the council, ask for the money, get the project done, so it's, we get invoiced before the end of the year. And yet our finance department is getting the invoice until three or four months later, I don't, I don't see how that's, how's that happening? What's going wrong? Because I remember when the invoice was, was, was created on that one expense. But somehow it didn't get to you to finance until last month. That, that something's wrong. So I'm a little concerned. And I'd love to see performance-based financials on year-to-date budget versus year-to-date performance.
Okay, I will, thank you for the comment and for the suggestion. I will. Discuss with, with Laurel how we should. Make the presentation or make a change. So I see we will have certain challenges because our financials, based off of what our policy is. And that's dictated by the state, right, the state's auditor, auditor's office that we've elected to report our financials based on cash basis. But these reports are certainly ad hoc reports.
Right.
But switching it from cash to now doing budgeting on a monthly basis would be. We could transition to it, but it won't be an easy transition. Just because as of now, we don't know. Me coming in new, I don't know what data I can, I can have that would allow me to make that allocation. On a monthly or by period basis, we can make a guess, we could do a straight line, I just don't know if straight line would be a good way. If looking at the performance, just because I know that there are certain, especially on the revenue side, that we have seasonality there. For instance, as an example, when I, on the revenue side, we know January and February will be good numbers. Because of the revenue that we're collecting from the prior two, two years, and that's fine. And then it falls down on February, excuse me, on March and April, picks up again through the summer months and then falls a little bit and then go up. So picking those trends would be a challenge because. Again, having those data, picking those data and creating that template. And also on our expenditure side, there are seasonalities there as well. So in the beginning of the year, there are certain expenses that we would pay upfront. For instance, our annual insurance premium for liability as well as certain. Software licenses upfront, that doesn't mean that, you know, you paid three hundred thousand dollars worth of premiums. In the beginning of the year and that represents, so we all have to factor in all of those seasonalities. And there's certainly a lot of data that we need to go through.
I understand the seasonality, I would assume that, that seasonality was applied when, when you did the budgeting. You wouldn't straight line the budgets because you know that they're, they're, in January and February, we get huge uptick in revenue. So I'm assuming you budgeted, you budgeted that, that uptick in revenue again, based on this year. So I, I, I would, I would assume that you have those numbers when you, when you did the budgeting, so it should be in the, in the software. But, you know, maybe, you know, it could be an offline discussion. Of, and I know one of the reasons why we moved to the new software, I thought was to be able to have this type of flexibility. And maybe you haven't moved to that yet, so we can duck that too, again, this could be an offline discussion.
Yeah, I think we'll have to follow up and figure out what you mean by month to month.
Um, councilmember Paddock.
Yeah, that's, yeah, again, it makes sure it's clear. The month-to-month projections versus the month-to-month actuals, I assume your projections are month-to-month. On S, on, on, on revenue and expenses, I would assume they are.
So the report that I have right now, these are all actual numbers. And the projections that I'm talking about are, like, if we're seeing the economy staying at five percent. I'm saying that we need to watch what the numbers would be as we progress through the monthly reporting. But we're not going to, at this time, make any recommendations to make an adjustment on the budget. Because again, it's too early.
Yeah.
And it's, and we don't have all that information at this time, and we have, we have time to do that at mid-year anyway.
I just wanted to make sure that was, maybe Laurel said it. She says, I want to understand what you mean by month-to-month, I'm, I'm thinking it's pretty simple that we have month-to-month projections on expenses and revenues. So what's our month-to-month actuals, you should, you just reported them year-to-date versus what we had projected year-to-date to be at. I, I don't know if we're ahead or behind against what we projected. And I know there's seasonality, but I assume that seasonality is in our budgeting process, maybe I'm wrong. But I would doubt that, I would, I'm sure you said the budget's based on the, the ebb and flow of data and, and, and increase from there, but.
I would recommend looking at, the finance director had some charts and it shows. The line graphs and it follows month by month and then it shows where we're at in comparison.
Maybe take a look at those.
In the packet, yeah, so that has the projections versus actuals visually.
Okay, I, I didn't have those, so. Thank you. So it looked to me like in, just in gen, general macro terms, that, that the biggest driver of revenue, sales tax, licenses. That's exceeding budget expectations and it's exceeding what we did in twenty two. So that sounds like, that's a, that's a plus on the debits, property tax. I'm, I'm sure everyone feels like property tax is gonna probably come in above or at projection. Expenses are down primarily because of kind of delays in hiring. Obviously understanding that there might be some retroactive spend that needs to be made. But it feels like we're kind of trending in the right direction on both of those.
Yes.
Okay. On the capital fund or the capital expenses, it, it sounds like the REIT is really, that's the Achilles heel for us. As it is for the, for the state.
Yes.
And, and you had mentioned in the finance committee meeting that there's kind of a, a long tail on how we can deal with that, it's not something we have to make up right away.
Correct, because remember the capital projects fund is, is pretty much the one that's financing our six-year capital project. And transportation plan, so we have time to figure out whether the impacts of the revenue that would come in from that capital project. Whether that would really force us to reconsider how that plan, how we will fund those plans. Whether we're going to defer them or look for alternative funding or those other, those projects.
Okay, so, so let's be alert financially, but not necessarily worry.
Yeah, we will be vigilant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Allison?
Yeah, and my takeaway was you're monitoring that and if we do need to make a decision about slowing something down. Or, or finding an alternate funding source, we'd look at that in a few months when you have a little bit more history to look at.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for such a thorough report and answering all our questions.
All right, now we will move on to. Mayor and council reports. I just have a couple of things to report, I just want to point out that we had a ribbon cutting for the Bain Cobble Banker. Opening up officially in Mill Creek on Friday, it was really fun, they had a huge attendance. And the president came, of their company came, lots of people. Cora and I went, cut the ribbon, it was really fun, it was nice to see everybody out there. So I'm very excited to have them here. Also, I just want to point out that I've, I have noticed that I am seeing more police presence driving around. So I just wanted to make sure I highlighted that and, and noted it, that I am seeing officers drive through and drive through the neighborhood. And so just wanted to point that out and I appreciate it. And then I will move, I will.
Go to councilmember Stakler. I'm thinking it's supposed to be Vince, but he's not here.
Thank you, I, I said one comment that I wanted to share with everyone. First of all, I had, I, I went to the chamber commerce meeting that, that our mayor made a state of the city to our business leaders. And, and great attendance by many other members here on the, on the dice in support of that. He did a great job, that was a great presentation, but what was also interesting was the response from the businesses afterwards. I, I was, I was very impressed with the relationship that we're developing, I'm glad we had the meeting here at, at a city property and city hall north. Whatever we can do to improve those relations with the chamber, I think between the city and the chamber is a real plus for our city. So any, anything we could do there, and I also wanted to put in a plug to the chamber because. The Kiwanis Club of Mill Creek is holding a, a bingo night just for, for the fun of the city, not, not really expecting to raise any money. And the, the support from the chamber was phenomenal, they gave us three hundred dollars worth of gift cards at the end of that presentation, just to support. The Kiwanis Club and the efforts that they're doing, just to get people to come out of their homes and come down here to. And city hall north is where we're going to be doing the bingo tomorrow night. And so I was again, very impressed with the, the, the support from the chamber and the alliance between the city and the chamber. And glad we also had representatives from the, you know, the city's staff as well as the council staff. So it was really well attended and a really good relationship. I have not been in a while because of my recovery process and my surgeries and stuff. And so I was really happy to see the support of the council of how big they're growing, they're getting bigger, they're getting more representation from more businesses. And that's a strength for any city to have a good, strong chamber, so it was, it was a very positive experience, thank you.
John, one question, who's gonna be doing the calling for that bingo session for Kiwanis?
They decided to pick a Kiwanis member that had a really big mouth and had a need to get a lot of attention and, oh yeah, it's me. Yeah, that's right.
Just wanted that for the record, thank you.
Councilmember Allison, any reports?
Just to comment, my heart goes out to everyone who's worried about their children right now after the shooting that occurred in Tennessee. I know it's on the other side of the country, but all of us that especially have children in school, it hits, it hits us in a special way. So my thoughts are with everybody that's struggling with that right now.
Councilmember J K?
Same as councilmember Allison. Sorry. I wanted to talk about the, the coffee chat and I wanted to say thank you to the city manager and to the deputy city manager. For, for such a great event, it was the first one I have attended in person. I, I used to be a regular on the Zoom chats and I thought it was fantastic and I really appreciated. Martin and Laurel's expertise, knowledge and of course, it was a great fun to be there with councilmember Paddock. In our standing room only section where we would pop in for guest appearances for questions, but I really appreciated everyone's comments. And I just wanted to share, I know Barbara already spoke about this in, in the beginning of the presentation. But there was definitely a lot of conversation about actually middle housing, which is, which was very timely because we had just had the presentation. So we were able to, to speak to that and what does that look like? A lot of conversation about legislation, a conversation about our police. You know, there were questions that we were maybe able to, the, the city manager was able to answer. In terms of where we are for staffing and, and those kind of conversations that I think, you know. Maybe people aren't just, you know, up to date on, on the strides that we have, that we have made or not even the strides. The purpose and the priority that our city staff has done to address the issues that we as representatives of, of our residents. Have flagged as priorities, so I thought that was really good, I'm happy to attend future ones to see. It was just, it was, it was, it was really good there, I also wanted to acknowledge, I can't do the one that councilor Allison said. Because that will get me in a whole nother thing, but the day that, last, was it Wednesday or Thursday? The day that we were, that Wednesday that we were talking about all those things happening, the thing I kept getting. Because some people know that I'm on council, not everyone, people, some people just know me as Diego and Rafa's mom, you know, who volunteers in the library. But I had a lot of questions about what we can do and what does this mean, because there were so many things that happened that one day, that was just so much. And I include Everett because I don't see us as walls. And so I just remind you to like get to know your neighbors, make sure you have, I think that's the one thing that we can do as a community is just to make sure we know each other. And that we report things that they happen, I know I saw, I think it was on Facebook that was vandalism at our restrooms again at sports park. It happens to be in Mill Creek Little League time, so I'm sure that's very devastating for all the parents who are there waiting for their kids not being able to use those restrooms. And I thank the city for being proactive with porta potties and the open communication that way. But just as a reminder to, to know your neighbors, know, you know, make sure that you have those, you, you just, you just get to build those relationships. Because I think that's core for us being able to. Build the community that we all want to live in.
Thank you, councilmember J K, councilmember Paddock.
Thank you, I just want to jump on what councilmember J K had mentioned about the MCCA coffee chat, city chat. My impression just going in kind of a, a yes and was that the twenty five, thirty people or, or so that were there. Were, there was the energy of, hey, we want to, we want to understand the problems that we have going on. In fact, I think the, within two minutes, one of the gentlemen had said, now, let's talk about the, what do you call it, something, the monster in the room. Or the, the big question or whatnot, and which was about, which was about middle housing and zoning growth. Nonetheless, because of the city manager and the deputy city manager and councilmember Duque, especially with her participation on the legislative council. Or legislative committee was able to take with facts and data and perspective, real-time perspective, bring down that level of concern. By saying, hey, these are the things that are being addressed, here's what middle housing really means, here's what's, here's what the house bills really mean. Here's what we know and we don't know, and here's where you can go to get more information. And that more information really gets to Scott Harder and Jody, you know, obviously in the communications team. Having website, having our website set up with information on two of the three things they wanted to talk about, they want to talk about zoning and growth. We got a website for that, they want to talk about property tax, we got a website for that, they want to talk about the staff. They want to talk about the s- staffing of the police department. We don't have a website on that, but we could talk about what what the staffing was, which was uh, was was uh. Received in a very positive way. So. I know that our 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 uh communications team is is, you know, at eleven uh on the, the work that they're doing. Um, the more of that type of work that we do, I think the the easier it's going to be for for all of us to collectively solve the bigger problems. That that we face as a city. Um, but nonetheless, I I I I wanted to make sure I shouted that out because I I thought Melissa Dukey. Um, really helped quite a bit with both city manager and the um, and the deputy manager. Um, I had an opportunity, thanks to Chief White for setting up a uh, a a ride-along, got to spend the afternoon on, I believe it was Tuesday. Uh, with the, with the, one of the senior officers. Um, I'll tell you what I, what I heard from that was a tremendous amount of support for the new chief. A tremendous amount of enthusiasm for trying to find him back there for uh the uh, the deputy uh public safety uh manager. I probably have that title wrong, but I think you know who you are. Um, I also heard a shout-out for electric bikes, bikes, not just. Bike patrols, but electric bike patrols. I'll let, I'll let the chief uh talk to his staff about that. Um, but I promised him, after allowing me to sit in his uh sidecar for for about three and a half hours, I promised him that I would bring that up. So that was the quid pro quo, uh, if you will. Hopefully that's not on camera. Um, I also had heard from uh, from that particular patrol officer and a couple of the folks that. We were uh stomping around the DRCC and a couple of other areas where there are encampments behind uh, behind Lowe's and whatnot. A lot of relief about uh the number of new hires. Uh, and and actually anticipation for them getting through the academy, but a lot of relief that uh, that they're not gonna be asked to do quite so much um. Overtime, and that came on the day after uh both the stabbing and the fire fatality. Um, so these are, these are some folks that are doing some really hard work and still willing to let some old guy sit sideways and ask if he could play with the radio. So uh, I really appreciate that opportunity. We had a planning commission um, meeting, I believe it was two weeks ago. Uh, a few of us in this room were there and uh, in that planning commission session, uh, they went over the same presentation that we had seen. The the day before, a couple of days before, around uh what middle housing means, what the grant, how we're gonna use the grant to implement a communication and engagement plan. The reason I'm bringing that up is is not to repeat what its group already knows, but the vice chair, who has been a a a long time kind of icon in planning. Gave big props for the 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 communication plan, plan that had been put together by the consultants that we're working with. Um, and and called that out as kind of a gold standard of how we want to en- engage with our community. So I I I thought that was worth uh, uh, passing along. And then lastly. I'm done.
Thank you. Um, real quick before I I move on, um, I'll take a moment of privilege, I guess. Um, because I didn't, um, I didn't bring it up. I wasn't sure I could hold myself together. Um, but Councilmember Allison brought it up. So, um. I I just wanna draw attention here that, you know, this week. We had yet another day in this country that babies, the same age as mine, did not come home. And we should not have to live this way where parents are afraid just and their kids to school each day. Because you put them on that bus and you don't know, are they coming home today? And and it's gotta stop because we we can't keep living like this, not knowing when you put your child on the bus or they coming home. And um. I just want to bring up, you know, and tell the parents out there in our community that. We we feel you and we're here with you and we feel the same way and we're going through the same struggles. And so be kind to these parents because they're sending their kids to school every day and they don't know they're coming home. And you have to worry about it all day long. And it's just got to change. And so I just want. To draw attention to that and that, you know, that we hear you, that we feel you. And and we stand here with you too, because it it's really hard. Um, so I just wanna draw attention to that real quick. Thank you for indulging me for a moment. Um, and with that, I will move on to um that happy comment. I will move on to uh audience communication. Um, would anybody like to speak tonight? Go on once. Will says no. Okay, Will says no. So, thank you. And with that, we will call, we will adjourn the meeting. At eight fourteen PM. Thank you, everyone, for coming out.